Recording in progress. Welcome, I'd like to call the November 4th, 2021 West Sacramento Planning Commission meeting to order. We continue to meet via teleconference pursuant to Government Code Section 54953 subdivision E, by which members of the Planning Commission and staff are participating via live video conference to reduce the spread of COVID-19. Members of the public have been invited to watch the meeting via wave cable on our local channel 20, streaming online through the city's website and through the Zoom platform. Tonight's agenda and all agenda item materials are available on the city's website on the Planning Commission page. All public comments submitted by 5:00 PM via email to the Planning Commission clerk are available for consideration and are posted on the city website, along with the agenda and link to the live streaming video of this meeting. Members of the public attending via Zoom may also provide oral comments during the meeting. The Planning Commission clerk will note commenters for each item. With that, we will proceed with tonight's agenda. First step is General Administration Function Part 1A, Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda Within the Jurisdiction of the Commission.
Chair Soblon, I did want to note that we did receive one item of written correspondence under Item 1A, which has been provided to the Planning Commission. And staff is in active dialogue with that resident and several others regarding that matter. But we want to make sure that the commissioners saw that communication under Friday 1A.
Yeah, I think we received that. And then, okay, so moving to, and that, Mr. Tilly, that Mr. Ryland is not on the call today, on the meeting now?
I do not, I do not see him on there.
Okay. Okay, so moving to Item 1B, Correspondence and Staff Communications from the Planning Commission Secretary.
Just like to also let the commission know, we did send out a memo to you somewhat late today regarding the first item on your regular agenda tonight. We will be requesting a continuance on that item. So when we get to that item, we'll address that in greater detail. But that did come up a little bit late this afternoon, so I want to make sure everyone was aware of that before we get to that item.
Thank you. Part 1C, Disclosure of Ex parte Communications. Do any commissioners have anything to disclose? Not seeing any hands. Moving to, pardon my paper stuff. The Consent Agenda, Item 2, Consideration and Approval of the Minutes from the October 21st, 2021 Commission Meeting. Any discussion or motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Hirsch.
I will second.
Second from Commissioner Steger. Ms. Flores, can you do the roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berliner?
Stand.
Commissioner Lockhart?
Aye.
Commissioner Deander?
Aye.
Commissioner Escaval?
Aye.
Commissioner Steger?
Aye.
Commissioner Hurd?
Aye.
Chair Soblon?
Aye. With that, the motion passes. Thank you. Um, just, Mr. Tilly, I don't know if this is for you or for City Attorney. Just for Item 3, does Commissioner Escaval need to recuse even for the continuation, or how do we handle that?
No, she does.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and just mention that I do own property within 500 feet, and so I will be recusing myself from, from this vote. And I will turn off my camera as well.
Thanks. So, regular agenda, Item 3, Public Hearing Regarding Marshall Road Tentative Parcel Map 5213. And for this item, this is the recommended continuation by staff.
Yes, we're, we are recommending a continuation until November 18th. Uh, we had an issue come up on the conditions of approval today. And the engineering staff member who has the answers is on vacation this week. So to give adequate time to answer the applicant's question, we're asking for a two-week continuance.
And that was the applicant's request as well.
Thank you. Any, any motion or discussion on this? See, Commissioner Hirsch.
I just had one quick question because I did see that we had one public comment. Even though we're about to move to continue, I'm happy to make that motion. The staff responded to that public comment outside of the meeting?
Oh. Yes, I, I will be responding to them and answering their questions, so.
We should open it up for any additional comment if we have any on this before we vote on the continuance.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this, or any comments from the applicant?
No public comments, no.
And is the applicant on?
The applicant is not on. But be here on the 18th.
Okay.
Well, in that case, Chair Soblon, I'm happy to make the motion to continue the item per the staff recommendation.
We have a motion to adopt staff recommendation to continue.
I'll second that motion.
A second from Commissioner Lockhart. Ms. Flores, can you do the roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Deander?
Aye.
Commissioner Lockhart?
Aye.
Commissioner Steger?
Aye.
Commissioner Berliner?
Aye.
Commissioner Escaval?
Oh, Commissioner Escaval refused herself from this item.
Oh, my apologies. Commissioner Hurd?
Aye.
Chair Soblon?
Aye. Okay, with that, the motion passes, and this item will be continued to November 18th. Moving to Item 4, Presentation and Discussion of the City's Climate Action Plan Update. This is Mr. Tilly and Mr. Laffey.
Yes, I'm gonna go ahead and start this one off, but I'm gonna let, Seamus is gonna do, you know, the lion's share of it, and we do have a PowerPoint for you tonight. So just by way of background, you know, matters of climate have been, you know, front and center for many years now. The city prepared an initial climate action plan way back in 2009 when those plans were really in their infancy. And we have been working on numerous other climate-related matters ever since. And, you know, not waiting until we have a formal plan adopted to implement various, various steps. Climate change is certainly a front and center topic, even this week with what's at, with the conference going on in Glasgow. And then even just last month when the UN panel put out its findings on climate change. You know, with really trying to, you know, submit how, how, how serious of an issue this is and how we are perhaps already behind in trying to grasp it. Tanya, can you put up the PowerPoint, please? So, fast forward a little bit until about this, starting in 2018, West Sacramento participated with the City of Sacramento in the Mayor's Commission of Climate Change. This was about an 18-month process involving a very broad base of stakeholders and technical experts, really focusing on how can the two cities become carbon neutral, you know, in the, in, by 2035 and hopefully sooner. When that, that very first session of that commission, which West Sacramento was represented on the commission by Mayor Protagonism Desma, we were challenged by our, by then Mayor Cabaldin and then remaining Mayor Steinberg in Sacramento to be bold and aggressive. And thus, that was something we took to heart. And our participation in that effort, which I was one of the main staff persons on it, was really meant to inform our own cap work. And to, so our work on our climate action plan is to take those recommendations, of which there were a whole suite of recommendations, and then try to drill down to, now to the ground on, in West Sacramento, and what we can be doing here. This is a huge challenge. It will ultimately require a lot of changes in how the city operates and how, how our community members conduct their daily lives if we're going to achieve our climate objectives and hopefully avoid the worst effects of climate change, especially as they relate to our most vulnerable residents, residents who are already being disproportionately impacted by the effects of climate change. Next slide, please. So, so we're gonna go, we're gonna sort of set the stage here tonight. And we're gonna be, try to have some prompts in our presentation for, to try to get some initial feedback from the commission. And once we get to the end, I would also like to hear some feedback from the commission about how staff can, how staff can best bring this information forward to you in future meetings. Because, you know, it is a lot of information. Some of it is very technical. And so we, we need to figure out the best way to provide it to you so that when we ultimately ask you to make a recommendation to City Council, you know, that you're ready. We will also be going to some of our other city commissions. For example, we just went to the Transportation Commission this past Monday night. And part of our goal there, since those other commissions have a more, yeah, there's, they have a more of a focus in, you know, certain resource areas. We are gonna try to get feedback from those commissions on those areas and then sort of synthesize that and provide that to the Planning Commission in the future. So that, you know, you have that information. And your, since your commission then has to take everything and look at it holistically, we found that when, especially during the, the general plan and housing element days, when we took certain matters to those, up to those other commissions that have more specific areas of focus, we found that, that helped the Planning Commission at that time put it all together with the input from the other commissions. So that's what I'm proposing to do this time around. But at the end here, I would like to hear a little bit from the commission about how best to bring this to you in a way that's digestible. And because it can be a lot of information and technical. And we're also trying to employ some of the techniques that we, we learned in, with the Bloomberg Harvard work. Whereas we're bringing things forward perhaps a little bit earlier than we may have done previously. Where, where these ideas, there's enough there to provide some feedback, but nothing is set in stone, and some of these measures are still malleable. And we'll take the feedback that we get from the commissions that we're, we're attending this week and next, and then provide some refinements, and then we'll be back again with hopefully starting to, you know, get this to a point where it's cohesive and planned and ready to go. So, next slide, please. So this is a sort of a summary of many of the things we have done. The Mayor's Commission on Climate Change was very important, particularly as it relates to equity. That was a theme that really emerged during that process from a lot of the stakeholders, including many West Sacramento residents and businesses. And it really took, you know, took root. You really can't be talking about climate without talking about equity and vice versa. It's, we, we found a lot through that, that if folks out there are, you know, mostly worried about making sure they can put food on the table or keep a roof over their head, it's very hard for them to be focused on climate resiliency when, you know, they're just trying to make sure that they have, you know, the basic necessities in life. But also recognize that there's numerous measures, and not everybody can do all of them, but everybody can do at least some of them. And we need to make sure that equity is a front and center matter in our climate, in our climate adaptation, and make sure that our most vulnerable residents are not disproportionately impacted if we can help it at all. So that, that's sort of a foundation of what we're going, how we're going into it. And most of our measures in our cap will have sort of that equity lens. And we will be looking tonight for some specific feedback in the context of equity on some of our work. So, next slide, please. I'm gonna turn it over to Seamus now, and he's gonna walk you through where, where we're proposing to head on our climate work now.
Yes, good evening, Commission. So the overall goal of the Climate Action Plan is to get to net zero by 2045. So that is when the, the city's net greenhouse gas emissions equals zero. So the first step is to figure out, you know, where we are right now. So we started the Climate Action Plan update a year and a half ago. We're working with our consultant, ACOM, and they prepared the baseline GHG emissions for the city for 2018. And 2018 is the baseline here. So you can see on the screen here, this is where the city's emission, this is the emission profile of the city. A large majority of those coming from transportation and energy using, energy for buildings. So this could be everything from personal automobile to fleet vehicles for businesses to, you know, warehousing, distribution, those vehicles, forklifts, to building energy. So that could be the energy it's used for heating and cooling residential, commercial, industrial buildings. And then the 6% is waste. So, Tanya, next slide. So this, this further refines, you can further see where the emissions of the city come from. You can still see that the majority of these are on-road vehicles. And then after that, 18% is energy for commercial buildings, and 12% is energy for residential buildings. Next slide, Tanya. So the Climate Action Plan, we have six main goals. Plan for all-electric buildings citywide. This would be phasing out natural gas. Second one is design a future with zero carbon power sources. Pies back into the first one. The third one, reimagine how we move people and goods. So the transportation-related, you could saw, saw in previous slide was a large major, majority of the city's emissions. So also promote cleaner vehicles and equipment in our community. And then the fourth, the fifth one is create a waste-free city. And lastly, build carbon-negative and livable communities. So, Tanya, next slide. So as we go through these next slides, we really want the commission be thinking about what are the barriers to achieving these actions? And what tactics can the city take to ensure that these actions are successful? And what else should the city consider when planning to implement these actions? So when we go through these, I think it's probably best if we open it up to discussion or comments or questions for every, every slide. There, there are a decent number of, of goals and actions that we'll go through. And I think that way, if you have something, we can bring it up at the time. So, Tanya, next slide, please. So for, for each emission reduction goal, there are multiple actions the city could take. Those are gonna be bolted right here under each goal. And then for, for, for all those, we have identified, or the consultant and the city have identified equity issues and possible solutions to those equity issues, as well as implementation tactics. So for the first goal, plan for all-electric buildings citywide. How do we achieve that? So we can develop and adopt building electrification code requirements and incentives for existing buildings. We can establish energy performance standards and greenhouse gas emission limits for existing commercial buildings. Create a home energy audit program and minimum efficient, efficiency threshold, as well as mandate all-electric new construction to eliminate fossil fuel. So really, this is about reducing the GHG emissions and by, from the energy that is used in the city. And the next goal is design a future with zero carbon power sources. So incentivize local solar systems and enhance energy storage and promote participation in community solar programs and enhance utility coordination or evaluate community choice aggregation options that provide access to carbon-free electricity and building efficiency retrograde, or retrofit rebates and funding. So this is really, where the city is gonna be relying on the energy provider. The energy provider may be getting their electricity from non-renewable sources. Or they may not have rebate that are really incentivizing the citizens of West Sac that transition over. So that'll be looked at as the energy provider. So for, for these two goals for electrifying the city and where our power comes from, I want to open it up to any comments or questions while we're on this slide.
Commissioner Lockhart.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the staff for putting together all this information. Really appreciated all the background that was provided in the meeting packet. So thank you for, for that. I am also glad that equity is top of mind. And, you know, these are all important goals, and I'm glad that the city's dreaming big. But we also need to be grounded in reality. And affordability is gonna be a key issue that I hope that we continue to look at. Just this week, there was news that Sacramento is the least affordable housing market. And so anything that we do that increase the cost of building housing, particularly multifamily housing, it solves one problem and then in, in turn creates another. So just wanted to flag that. And then also for relying on a single energy source, the reliability issues that come with that. I appreciate the report that was included in the packet that did include a sentence saying that Sacramento may have more flexibility with this since they are a municipal utility district, whereas we get our energy from an investor-owned utility. So there may not be the same flexibility to invest in the infrastructure needed. And, you know, being mindful of whether or not the grid here can handle the extra capacity for electrification. I think of it at a granular level from a household standpoint. I've heard that homes that use natural gas-powered appliances save, on average, $900 a year from using these appliances. In my home, we replaced an electric appliance this year and waited seven months to receive it. So, you know, considering our supply chain issues, will, will there be the availability of these appliances for people to make these changes in their home? I also think about the businesses in our community, restaurants in particular. I know very few chefs that cook on electric stoves. When you think of commercial restaurants, and those are natural gas-powered. And so I support the city's goals again. I think it's important that we look to the future, and sustainability is key for having a vibrant city. But we also need to be very mindful of the, the impacts of, of these policies.
Thank you, Commissioner Lockhart. Is any other comments, discussion? Not seeing any. I just have one thing on, on, in addition to what Commissioner Lockhart said. She touched on a lot of the issues with equity and just thinking of unintended consequences. So, you know, focusing on doing local solar, you know, are there issues with that? With, I think the systems have evolved since the older ones. But the waste stream that comes from those, when, when those outlive their lifetime and, you know, the waste, where does that go? If we're going, does that conflict with being a zero-waste city? And how do these, how do these goals conflict with each other? And how do we make them work together? But do you think one of the biggest things will be costs, you know, costs for achieving these things and just how, how do we subsidize these things? And how do we incentivize that is, I mean, I think that's what you're asking us, how do we incentivize that? But, you know, do we have funding for that? How do we get that funding? Is it grants? Are there federal funds available? Trying to creative ways to get, get things funded through the state or federal funding?
That's, that's a very good point, Chair Soblon. And I'm, I'm fairly confident in saying that the city would not be able to do this by itself. You know, we will need maximum cooperation from our utility company, you know, to be able to do that. And at least as it stands right now, there's quite a disparity between what SMUD in Sacramento offers and what PG&E offers to us here in Yolo County. So it will be imperative for us to achieve these goals that, that situation hopefully gets improved upon, you know, to where PG&E is able to provide additional incentives above and beyond what they already do, something much more aligned to what SMUD is doing. Or quite possibly, the city may need to entertain having a different energy provider. There was a specific recommendation that was voted on unanimously by the Mayor's Commission that they would advocate to, for West Sacramento to move to a more climate-friendly utility. Because, because of many of the issues that you mentioned, where these things can be costly and not everybody will be able to do them just out of pocket. And we also do want to make as many of these things incentivized as possible and as minimal regulatory as we can because of the, the equity issues. And even if many folks may, may want to, you know, do many of these things, you know, just may, they may not have the needs. So we need to make sure that we are trying to help those folks because those are the most vulnerable. And so that's, you know, that's a big topic right now of, well, where is, where are the utility providers in this discussion? Because it's, you know, we're, we're at a bit of a disadvantage, you know, presently. And that was very obvious through the Mayor's Commission report, you know, sort of side by side. It was, you know, almost like day and night.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Tilly. I think, Mr. Laffey, if there aren't further comments, we can move to the next slide.
I see Commissioner Lockhart has her hand raised. I don't know. Tanya, next slide. So the next goal is transportation-related. Reimagine how we move people and goods. So the first action is prioritize transit-oriented development and center toward our community growth through land use plant, planning. And we really, we already do this, but we really got double, double down. So a lot of these actions we're going through, you'll see that we've, the City of West Sacramento is already making, going a long way to meeting these actions already, but it's really doubling down on these. So the next one is allocate funding to expand active transportation and micro-mobility network. And the next one after that, develop partnerships and allocate funding to increase the accessibility, frequency, and reliability of public, public transit. Provide more telecommuting opportunities for city staff and encouraging employers in the city also to encourage them to telecommute as well. And lastly, advocate for use of alternative fuels within the rail freight system. So we have one more slide that is transportation-related. So we can go to that one next, Tanya. All right, so the goal is promote cleaner vehicles and equipment in our community. And to do that, establishing an electric vehicle car share program with free or subsidized rates for low-income residents. Establish vehicle electrification targets for the city fleet. Expand the electric vehicle Expand the electric vehicle charging network through building code requirements and installations of public charging infrastructure. And this is something that. Uh, we really have already done, or we require twenty percent while new um projects to be, have EV up twenty percent of their parking to be EV. Um, but you know, maybe that might have to be, be increased over time. The next one, partner with warehouse and distribution centers that facilitate fleet electrification. I know um, some of our industrial use businesses may be already considering that. But again, getting back to net zero by twenty forty-five, that's less than twenty-five years away. Then it takes some time to transition, but we've really got to start now. And then lastly, promote off-road vehicle electrification by specifying lower zero emissions vehicles and city contracts. And by, by off-road, um, this really means like forklifts, you know, uh vehicles that are not on the streets, but are still. Contributing to greenhouse gas emissions. Um, so forklifts are, are a big one. So this is, these two slides were the transportation related, so um. Chair Sablon, I'd like to see if the commission has any questions on these or comments.
I see Vice Chair Berlin already has her on. You, you said, you know, electric vehicles and her eyes lit up.
You guys know me so well. Um, can you go back, uh? Uh, Ms. Flores, can you go back to the first slide? There are things I want to say on this slide, but I want to go back to the first slide real quick. Okay, awesome. Thank you. So, um, Mr. La- Laffey, uh, questions about this. So for TOD, um, for TOD and mixed use, a lot of that like. We don't have SACRT, like we don't have light rail. Um, our bus service, at least especially in the southern part of town, is, is fairly limited. Have, are there discussions to partner with SACRT to expand light rail to the southern part of? West Sacramento and or increase bus service through Yolo Bus? Or are we really relying on um VIA and the other um? Micro mobility options that we have in town?
Yeah, so for this one, it's, it is a little bit of a chicken and egg because you need the density to get uh the transit to be um, you know. People to use the transit and have it fund itself. Um, so. But to answer your question, yeah, um, our transportation planning group is working with SACRT to um get. Light rail across the river into the bridge district. And um, at the, the Southport framework plan actually, which is more than twenty years old. Uh, includes language in there about extending light rail down into Southport. Um, it was. And it's, it's the plan uh always was for it to come down in Southport. And actually along the old rail line, which is now the Clarksburg Branch Line Trail. So that would be the, the goal, um, to get expanded transit options into the city of West Sacramento. Um, and there was the streetcar, I, you know, idea going into Bridge District and Washington District. Um, but yeah, now um, you mentioned, you know, bus service that, that they had, they had been having. Um, issues with, with funding and getting uh drivers and um. But yeah, we have, we have VIA uh and alternative modes like the, the scooters and the ride, the bike share. So David, do you?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So see if David had anything to add to that.
Yeah, I mean, we are actively working with Sacramento and RT and other partners to um bring light rail into West Sacramento. Getting it in over the bridge and into West Sacramento is the biggest hurdle. And then it can really be take off, you know, from there. Uh, we definitely need cooperation from our regional partners on that and also at the state level. But those are, those are the kinds of big things that we feel like we really need to do. Um, especially given how more than half of our emissions are from tailpipes. Uh, that's where we feel like we have to make the biggest gain. And so getting, you know, dedicated mass transit in addition to micro mobility options. Uh, is, you know, uh we think is essential, um, if we're going to achieve our climate objectives. Um, you know, people, if they don't have a choice, but otherwise to get into their single occupancy vehicle. Uh, we can't really blame them if they don't have any other choices. And this is a, this is a really important um piece of the puzzle here. Um, given that how large the amount of emissions are um tailpipes.
And then sort of to build on that, I'm going to the next slide. Um, I know that. For um, there was mention of car share. Um, currently gig is really, the gig car share is really only available in. A very limited area. I think it's just the bridge district. I don't think it's beyond that like block area. Are there plans to expand that into other neighborhoods? Cause I think the thing is too, like I get that Southport and south of the Barge Canal is, you know, very residential. It's, it's not dense. It's very much a car. It's, it's very much car oriented, but if we can sort of. You know, put, you know, if, if you build it, they will come kind of thing. Um, if you can put those cars out there and those bikes out there and the scooters out there. And I understand you, that the city doesn't have control over whether or not the cars show up there. But mostly if they're allowed to, if they're considered in zone out there, it's more likely that those vehicles will eventually show up there.
Oh, I, I think you're absolutely right. Um, I'd like to have that subsidy wide, you know, if we could. Uh, and as far as whether through the mobility action plan, you know, we will be working on these additional mobility hubs. In different parts of the city, but we are, you know, first focus is in those areas where, you know, people may not have cars already. But we need to have that infrastructure in place to allow people to maybe go, more people go car free by choice. And so we, you know, we need, we're trying to build in car sharing into our projects and like. Seamus mentioned, um, you know, the EV charging that we already put into the zoning code, you know, a couple of years back and. I remember that even came up when the um. Now Dutch Brothers, you know, was coming through a few meetings back. And that goes back to the equ- equity, whereas um folks who may not be able to have their own EV charging at home. Uh, we need to make sure we have that public available. But then at the same time, the gig cars, so it's, it's all of the above we need to be doing and doing more. So it's a matter of how.
And thank you. And my last question, why on earth did we, like, I guess this was also on. On the commissioners, but if we're really pushing towards um a zero emission future. Why are we? I'm going to say this, and I know it's not going to be politically correct, and so my apologies now. Why are we approv- why are we approving or having, you know, CNG refueling stations in front of? The planning commission, like why, why are those even getting to us if we want zero emission? We need to go all in.
Well, that, you make a good point. And when that one came through to us in the beginning, Seamus and I were highly skeptical. Um, about that one because it seemed to be going the wrong way. You know, CNG is nothing new. Um, I can remember college professor telling me a million years ago that it's not clean, it's just less dirty. And that's something that's resonated with me all these years. The difference on that one was what we got from the air district. Um, that's what sort of sold us on that one because uh, it was. You know, light years better than diesel. And.
It is not hard to be light years better than diesel, yes.
And we also though saw that as a, hopefully a bridge to um electrification. And hopefully even hydrogen fuel cells um on the commercial end of things. And hopefully that's coming sooner or not because I already uh working with someone who wants to do another hydrogen fueling station. Right down by where that CNG facility is. So hopefully, 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 um, that bridge will be a short bridge. And we'll be able to get to uh where we really need to be sooner rather than later. But um, for a town like ours, it still has a lot of trucks and a lot of diesel. Um, which is not just a climate change matter, it's a public health. You know, matter with the diesel particulate matter being a toxic air contaminant and a carcinogen. Uh, you know, that was a, we saw that as, as a, as a gain, even if it didn't get us all the way. To where we would all like to be right now. Uh, but we were very skeptical on that one at first because. It just didn't, it didn't seem like it was going to get us anywhere, but, and this was the Sacramento Air District, by the way. Um, who's um executive director, I think this is Sal actually lives here in West Sacramento, so he's very fond of us. And uh, but we really relied a lot on, on their input on that one because. Otherwise, um, I don't think we would have recommended approval of that one, you know, to the commission and ultimately to the council.
Well, thank you, David. Thank you, Seamus. I'm sorry for grilling you both.
Commissioner Hirsch.
Thanks, Chair Sablon. And I'll, I'll keep my questions and comments short because Vice Chair Berliner has. Much more technical expertise in the realm of transportation than I do. But you know, from my experience sharing the city's transportation commission the last three years, I know that. The city of West Sacramento has really made some impressive um bounds in terms of. Increasing active transportation. So I'm glad that you uh recently gave a presentation, give my commission to, to keep them on the loop and get their feedback. Um, you know, Mr. Tilly, you were talking about the mobility hubs and the plan with the mobility action plan in the city to eventually. Have those throughout, which I think is critical in terms of reducing the transportation emissions in the city. Um, the chart at the beginning, I think it said that sixty-four percent of the city's emissions came from transportation. I know that's much higher than, I think the statewide average is forty percent of the state's emissions or transportation. But because of the particular um uses of a land in the city, ours is significantly higher. So I think anything that helps reduce uh emissions is critical, even if it's, you know. Less dirty instead of completely clean, but at any step is helpful. And I had a couple of thoughts about both the. Um, I guess personal transportation before moving on to industrial uses. So my first question. The staff would be taking into mind what Commissioner Larkhart spoke about previously in terms of equity. And what Commissioner, Vice Chair Berliner spoke about in terms of extending mass transit, hopefully someday down to Southport through light rail or streetcar. Or whichever method. But I think that it's essential for the city to also focus on individual transportation. In terms of bicycle or the micro mobility devices that we currently have. I think of Davis, where I went to law school, where there's this incredible network of bike paths that connect the entire city. Um, which is, I think comparable in size to the city of West Sacramento. That where folks can easily go from one end to the other. And we don't quite have that yet here in the city of West Sacramento. Very difficult for someone who lives down in the Bridgeway area to bike safely up into the bridge district or into the Washington district. So I hope that the city's planning involves not just electrification, which is essential. But also non-vehicle transportation, because that I think would play a large role as well in reducing emissions. And increasing um cleaner transportation overall. And then my second portion of my comments are more about the fact that we are sixty-four percent transportation. Being our emission output. I see a lot of these goals here in the city's uh climate action plan. Focus more on the use of personal vehicles and the electrification of personal vehicles. And I do note that there's the goal of partnering with warehouses and distribution centers that facilitate fleet electrification. But because we do have such a sizable percentage of our emissions coming from transportation. Uh, I think that there's more that could be done there in terms of not just fleet electrification, but the. Construction of electrical charging stations, um, both personal, but also commercial throughout the city. You know, right now we have very limited areas and I understand that as we move forward, we're going to continue to. Uh, encourage and require a larger percentage of parking spaces to be electric. But I think beyond just the. Commercial public parking spaces, if there's anything the city can do as well to encourage additional. Electrical charging stations in the industrial areas, that, that could be room for significant progress. So wanted to make sure the city is looking at that as well.
Yeah, we actually are and will be rolling some stuff out. We just had a kickoff meeting uh with the designer on that front. That's going to be a great start, but we will need to do more. Um, but we are already going to start doing that to uh get more publicly available chargers, but then also ones that will be. A lot more uh practical to use by some of our businesses, um, you know, with, with, with fleets. And you mentioned the transportation commission the other night, they had a very good point about um some of the small businesses that are out there. How um, they may, maybe they may be able to do a, an electric vehicle, but you know, they may not be able to go all the way on their property. With the charging infrastructure too. So that's goes back to the equity for our little guys. Uh, who, when you add them all up, it's quite, you know, can be quite a bit of, of vehicles. That we need to make sure that there is um adequate public charging available, especially for commercial vehicles. Uh, to help some of our small businesses also transition, um, and not just the big, big hitters out there. Um, you know, that we have in town. So that is something we're absolutely working on. Uh, we have some grant funding like two point six million dollars, but that's going to go fast and we'll need more and do more of that. To help get there. Um. Because, you know, Amazon, for example, maybe they'll do it on their own, but you know, your average small business may not. So we have to um, work, work from both angles and hopefully that means everybody wins in the end.
I, I couldn't agree more, Mr. Tilly. And what you said just now prompted me to think about as well. You know, one other area where I think. Transportation could move into a cleaner space is of course, you know, mass transit as Vice Chair Berliner said, but. Our city has its own unique form of ride shares with VIA. And I think that's something that might be critical in terms of increasing the use of VIA, the use of these shared um micro transit vehicles. Um, and I know that there's been obstacles in the past, but given the fact that the city of Sacramento and the city of West Sacramento are together. On this mayor's climate commission. Um, I am confident that a VIA was able to cross over the Tower Bridge or over the I Street Bridge, at least into the. Downtown Sacramento grid, you know, the, the regional center of the entire Sacramento region. Where you then have, whereas areas where you can transfer to the airport, transfer to the other parts of the Sacramento region. I think that the use of VIA, which is already a very popular service, would just increase dramatically among the city's residents. So I do hope that that's something that the city is uh considering as well and, and. I don't know all the logistical challenges behind it, of course, but I hope that there can be an open dialogue of the city of Sacramento to make that work. And those are my thoughts. Thank you, Chair Sablon.
Thank you, Commissioner Hirsch. Uh, Commissioner Escavel.
Those were kind of uh the same thought process that I was having when it comes to um the car share program. One of my questions was, how is this going to impact the existing VIA um ride share? And also wondering whether there is a thought process to expanding it outside of West Sacramento. Um, I think Commissioner Hirsch said it very well that if we have this car share program that sounds outside of West Sacramento to downtown. I think it could be very valuable, it could be very beneficial. Um, and the second. The second comment I wanted to make was about partnering with the warehouse and distribution centers. When I drop off my son at daycare, um, off of Southport Parkway and every now and then I, I continue to go on to run some errands. And I am just amazed with how many trucks, how many diesels, I mean, there, there's a lot of big cars out there. Um, and when we're thinking about equity and, and we're, you know, using the lens of equity throughout this process. I think about the apartment complex that's right across the street. And so I'm wondering how these conversations started with the, with the warehouses. Um, is, is there um, sorry, are there conversations that have started? What, kind of what, what does that look like and what's the feel for that moving forward?
Well, I'll, this will be a two-parter. Um, I'll start and I'll turn it over to Seamus. The, the grant funding we received recently uh for SACOC for the charging infrastructure. Um, we got that largely in part because we did partner with some of our fleet based businesses um in our community. Uh, to help them transition um to more and more uh electric vehicles and less and less, um, you know, fossil fuel vehicles. So that is, that is started, but that's got to be just the tip of the iceberg. Uh, but many of the others are building that in for when the time is right. Seamus, what are, where, what do we know about Amazon's intention out there at their facility? I know we, we discussed that with them quite a bit.
Yeah, Amazon recently constructed a pretty large fulfillment building and they, as part of their plans, they basically got it all set up for EV. Because Amazon's got their whole climate pledge and transitioning to EV vehicles, at least for, for direct home delivery. So they've got that, that building all set up for EV, where they would have, the delivery vans would be EV and they would charge at night or whatever they charge. I don't, I don't think they're currently EV, but they're, they're definitely headed in that direction and they, they built that building with that in mind. But as David said earlier, not, you know, Amazon's got a lot of money. A lot of our smaller industrial businesses maybe, you know, can't really afford that. So it's back to the equity of making sure everybody, make sure that everybody can do, do these measures.
And then it goes a lot to incentives that need to come from utility providers as well, not just for residential uses, but for our commercial users too.
Thank you, and I appreciate you also sharing the challenges of the small businesses as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Escobal. I don't see any hands up. I, I just had a quick thing on, on something Commissioner Hirsch touched on. I, I too came from the Transportation Commission. And just the biking thing, I think Commissioner Hirsch said, the, the safety thing is, is a big issue. We've had the, I haven't looked at it in a while, but we do have our, our bike plan for the city of West Sac. I'm not sure how that's prioritized, but if there's a way to prioritize the main thoroughfares, like getting those safe to ride on so that you could get from Southport to downtown safely. And I, I did email Mr. Tilly about the timing on the Fifth Street safety upgrades, because I know when I was on the Transportation Commission, there was talk about getting that done so you could get from Fifteenth Street or South River across and under the Fifth Street Bridge or Fifth Street, yeah, Fifth Street Bridge into the river bike path. I think once we have some safe way there, we can get more people riding into downtown and into the Bridge District and to Washington. It's, I, I know a lot of people that would ride into town, but they just don't feel safe. And every time I ride on Fifth Street, I'm just praying I don't get hit, you know? It's like, please don't get hit this time. And, and coming back, it's when it's dark, it's, it's just a really dangerous crossing to get, get downtown.
It is a particularly acute area that we need to work on and COVID definitely slowed that one down a little bit. But after you emailed me this morning or this afternoon, I got all the engineers monitoring that project and they are preparing to put that one out bid. So hopefully get a contractor, you know, on board here in the next few months and then hopefully start building that, you know, next year. But that, that's a, your good point, you know, we need, you know, those net bicycle networks to all be interconnected. And that's good for a public health standpoint, it's good for a climate standpoint. And I think it's just good for a social inclusion standpoint. So many of the efforts, many of the matters we're putting into this plan, we're, we're really trying to line up those efforts that could have a lot of co-benefits. Because we feared those have the best chance of success in achieving funding, where we can point out, you know, multiple benefits. And also, you know, there's, there's the localized benefits and then there's the citywide benefits, you know, more people biking is good in the, for those individuals, but it's also good for the city as a whole, if that just means that just, that much less emissions. You know, in the, in the global sense, so that's something that's felt at the neighborhood level, but also, you know, citywide. So there is, there is some method to the madness in these matters, but there is a lot, you know, the upside of a lot of this is there is an opportunity to, or a lot of co-benefits, especially on the public health side of things. That's also a very important objective for the city.
Yeah, and, and to equity, you know, biking's one of the cheapest ways to get, get around.
Absolutely. I just saw something the other night where somebody, you know, a teenager had his bike stolen, even though it was locked up and, you know, the person was lamenting that because that's how their teenager got to his job. And so that was really unfortunate, but it was, it was another indicator of how we do have a lot of folks that really depend on bicycle transportation out of necessity. But we need to make it easier for more people to bike and walk and roll and scoot out there for a variety of standpoints.
Yeah, yeah, and, yeah, and walking also, like being able to walk to the Bridge District would be, would be nice on that road as well. And just one thing for tactics to consider is for incentives with the small businesses. I don't know if there's some way to incentivize, you know, electrification through some negotiation with fees they pay with the city. I don't know if that's even enough, but just getting creative with, you know, if it's not being able to give them money, can we, can we bargain on fees or something?
I think all things need to be on the table there to help, help those businesses do this. It's for the greater good. And, but I'll plug again for, you know, definitely needing help from the energy providers, you know, on that front too, especially for the small businesses.
Yeah, and if there's anything with the Chamber of Commerce of, you know, getting, I, I don't know if we've already reached out to them and got their feedback on, on these issues and.
Yeah, we'll be going to the chamber next Tuesday, so we'll, we'll get some good input from the chamber, no doubt, next week. And I know they're excited to see us and, you know, I do want to hear from, you know, those folks who, you know, really are on the front lines, you know, trying to make their businesses, you know, successful in our community. But at the same time, are gonna need to make some changes as time goes by to hopefully reduce their, their carbon footprints.
And so, yeah, if we could hear back from what their comments are, that, that'd be great in the next staff report on this. Okay, see, I think those are all the hands for these two slides.
Seamus, you wanna pick it up again?
Yeah, Tanya, next slide. All right, so these two goals, David and I are gonna take these to the Environment and Utilities Commission next Monday night. So you're getting the preview. So the first goal, it's to create a waste-free city. And to do that, some of the actions identified are expanding the food recovery network to collect edible food from businesses and expanding commercial multifamily organic waste programs. And then the next goal is building a carbon-negative, livable communities, developing and implementing an urban forest master plan and evaluating carbon removal opportunities from industrial processes and direct air capture. So I think the, the Urban Forest Master Plan is definitely on the city's to-do list. We've, the city recently brought on a, a new city arborist and he's definitely expressed interest in getting this done and I think he identified some, some, some funding for it at our last Climate Action Plan meeting internally. But yeah, these are the two goals we've identified. So wanna see if there's any comments or questions on these two.
Commissioner Hirsch.
Thanks, Sarah Sablon, and, and just very short, I served on the city's Environment and Utilities Commission many years ago, so I don't remember much. But one thing I do remember towards the end of my time was the city's partnership with its regional contractor in terms of organic waste. And so I remember the city, you know, does have the program where individuals can request composting bins for their, for their organic waste. So when the city's goal is to expand commercial multifamily organic waste programs as well, what would that look like exactly?
Yeah, this, I saw David popped back on, but I know our Environmental Services Manager in their division is working a lot of the state requirements that are really headed towards, towards this already, especially the food recovery. I believe it's next year that we need to say, all, all businesses and residents seem to have a food recovery. Then for the organic waste. Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, our environmental services manager staff did do some presentation to city council last night on this particular topic. I will admit that I don't know all the ins and outs of it. But the goal here is to really try to capture the short-term climate pollutants. And so that's, that's something that's absolutely in the works. It's a new requirement the state has established. It is, it is a pretty big deal and we are grappling with how we're gonna actually implement it because it's a, you know, something the state has, you know, fostered upon us. But we can provide additional information on that and you may, if you have an opportunity to listen to the recording of the council meeting last night, there was probably a lot, a lot of detail in there, including a staff report about where we're going on this.
I'll, I'll be sure to check that out and just wanted then, again, applaud city staff, Mr. Tilly, Mr. Laffey and everyone else. I think it's, it's great that we have these goals, a waste-free city, to increase the Urban Forest Master Plan. You know, again, I think transportation is by far the largest segment of the emissions problem in the city. But I think that every part helps. I'm, I'm glad to see this.
Thank you, Commissioner Hirsch. Mr. Lockhart, I saw your hand up. Did you, did Commissioner?
Commissioner Hirsch, when I wanted to hear, so I'm good, thank you.
And just one quick thing on, on what Commissioner Hirsch said about the free compost bins. Is what kind of things is the city doing to advertise that and promote that? I, I know I got mine and I, I just happened to be on the Waste Management website to do something else and I saw the free bin. And so I got mine that way, but I don't know if there's, there's more to promote that of so people know that they can do that and it's easy to, easy to get their bin.
Yeah, I would agree that we do need to market that more. It's one of, one of those things that, you know, I imagine most people might not be cognizant of. I know I saw some city communications about getting additional like yard waste bins, especially, you know, this time of year that's out there. But it is part of how we try to do things, you know, we try not to overload people, you know, with information, but this is an important facet of things too, that can hopefully really make a difference when, when it comes to organics. And many people might even know that you could even throw your organics right in your yard wastes. Right now, even, you know, if you gotta order a pizza and the box is soiled, you can throw that right in your organics cart, you know, things of that nature. So it, you know, that's not just for, you know, lawn and leaf. It's, it's really for all organics now and my understanding is that we'll actually need to be start acquiring some of the composts, you know, from the landfill, once it's been processed and try to use that. And our new, as Seamus mentioned, our new arborist is excited about that opportunity to do some soil amendments and maybe get some carbon capture, you know, inside of our trail areas, parks and other open space. So there's a whole gamut of opportunities out there to make dents in this all while realizing, like Commissioner Hirsch said, how the transportation sector is definitely the, the biggest, you know, area we need to make improvements on.
And just related to that, Mr. Tilly, for households where you have, you know, multi-generation, like lots of people living in the house, the trash often fills up quickly. And so if they know they could put a lot of this food waste in the organics bin, that, that could help them with, you know, managing their, not needing to get another trash can or what, whatever they need to do to handle their waste too.
Yeah, that is something I think we should make, you know, better, you know, better general awareness of that. You know, that is okay to do. It's, you know, just for leaves and, you know, twigs and things.
Right, thank you.
Seamus?
All right, yeah, if there's any other comments or questions, we can move on to the next slide. So we were mentioning some of the code, code benefits for, so now we'll get into those. So for the first one, planning for all electric buildings citywide. So how does it help the climate? Reducing electricity and natural gas use reduces GHDs. Electric buildings can be powered by clean energy and all-electric new construction avoids future emissions and retrofit. Then how does that help you? It reduces the indoor air pollution, it can lower energy bills and it can create local jobs. Then for the next one here, design a future with zero carbon power sources. Again, how does it help the climate? Reducing GHDs associated with electricity production, creating new jobs with, how does it help you? Creating new jobs in solar and enhances resiliency with local energy sources. So we'll put these next few slides here, we'll go through some of the code benefits, but I don't know if we wanna take public comment on this one or keep on going. Keep on going then. Okay, Tanya, next slide. So this goal, reimagining how we move people and goods. So doing that produces vehicle trips and decrease, decreases GHDs from fuel use. It, and using alternative fuels and trains and ships can reduce the greenhouse gas emissions and moving goods. And how does that help the citizens of West Sac? And besides climate, it improves public health by reducing local vehicle pollution and promoting physical activity, walking and biking. It also reduces costs of living by reducing the need for cars, less fuel maintenance insurance, et cetera. And it improves accessibility to goods and services. And then for the next goal, promoting cleaner vehicles and equipment in our community. How does it help the climate? Zero emission vehicles produce no greenhouse gas emissions. Non-road equipment can use alternative fuels to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And then again, how does it help you? Improves public health by reducing the local pollution, you know, air, air particulates. Then also reduces vehicle costs and produces local jobs for EV charging and other infrastructure. And then one more, Tanya? So creating a waste-free city. How does it help the climate? Diverse wa- wastes that would have gone to a landfill. It reduces GHDs from decomposition. And how does this help citizens of West Sac? It improves food accessibility and creates local jobs. And lastly, build carbon-negative livable communities. Carbon sequestration and removal processes can help balance greenhouse gas, gases that cannot be reduced from direct local action. It helps the city achieve carbon-neutral goal. And again, this increases local air quality through planting trees. Currently, the city's urban forest canopy is not nearly as high as what the mayor's climate commission called for, so planting more trees. Definitely multiple benefits of planting more trees in terms of climate resiliency and air quality. So the next one here, reducing local temperatures through shading and heat absorption. Again, planting trees helps to lower the ambient temperature. And it could also lower energy costs if your tree is shading your house in summer, lower energy costs. Includes, improves climate resiliency and creates local jobs. So those are the, some of the code benefits. If you can think of any others, we'd love to hear them now. I think as David mentioned, we're, we're taking this to you before, this is a final document, get all of your input. So even if you don't think of something tonight, you know, definitely email us or call us up, provide a public comment later on. We're compiling this draft, so, but wanna see if anybody has, any, any of the commissioners have any comments on those code benefits.
I, I just had one quick thing and none of the other commissioners have anything. Just when we're thinking about the creation of jobs for things like electric vehicle maintenance and, and such, I think training for those jobs will be important because it won't, I don't think it's as easy to go from your typical gas-powered engine to just fixing, you know, the, the batteries for these electric vehicles. It's, it's really sophisticated and technical and you need a, a different type of training. So just thinking about that and the, the impacts to our, our, you know, traditional automotive service businesses in, in the city. And, you know, how are, are they gonna be able to convert over to, to maintaining these types of vehicles? You know, how are, are they going to be able to convert over to, to maintaining these types of vehicles and what kind of training they need and. Where can they get that training? But that, that's all I have. If, if none of, none of the commissioners have anything else, I think. We can move on.
What other questions? We'll move on. So, um, for each of these goals and actions, um. The ACOM Cities Consultant has, Tony, you can go on to the next slide. Um, well, first let's discuss equity. Um, that's definitely important. Um, so what other? So we've, we've talked a little bit about equity. Um, what are some other equity issues? Um, that we should consider for all, all these actions that have been identified, um. And are there any that we haven't considered? Um, so. And we'll, we'll, we'll go in to equity as well, um, in the next slide. So maybe. Um, we'll go to that, that one and then we can open it up to equity. So, um. We'll have an example action here, um, for each, for each action. Equity issues have been identified as well as equity solutions and implementation tactics. So for, for this action, developing and adopting building electrification code requirements and incentives for existing buildings. Um, an example is mandating electrification at end of useful life. Implementing point of sale point for lease electrification requirements. And requiring electrification during major renovations. So that could be how we achieve that. Um, and to do that, we could also provide incentives for local, uh, for electric equipment such as P, P pumps or induction cooktops. And next slide. So the equity considerations for, for building electrification. Um, electrification requirements may place a disproportionate cost burden on low income households. You may not be able to afford this. Electrification costs and rental units may be passed on to renters. Um, increased energy burden on households that not afford to electrify and plus shoulder increasing gas infrastructure costs. And also costs associated with electrification may impact the availab- availability of or prices of affordable housing. So. It really comes down to this electrifying is going to cost more and that will be shouldered by a lower income residence. That's the equity issue that's been identified. So how do, what's the solution for that? Um, providing financial support for low income households could be one of the solutions. As well as preparing low income households for electrification by expediting the decommissioning of natural gas infrastructure. Um, so. Um, next slide, please. So what other equity issues from this action should we consider? Cause building electrifications, one of the big ones, um, the bill, energy GHG emissions from, from building. And energy used in buildings is, um, right after transportation, it's the biggest chunk. And one of the easiest ways to reduce the GHG emissions is to electrify, um, no more natural gas. So what are? Um, some of the equity issued, I want to open it back up to the commission for, um, comments or questions on the equity. Uh, considerations, um, for, for that action item.
Mr. Lockhart.
Uh, thank you, Chair Sablon. And I think another equity issue is just the access to energy. We saw earlier this year that the state streets were out of power for several days after a storm. And so, um, if we're requiring more electrification in households. And, you know, we're already seeing the infrastructure not able to handle this and we had families working, um. From their cars to recharge their phones so that they could do Zoom for work and Zoom for school. Um, you know, just, we need to consider the infrastructure and its ability to handle. An even greater reliance on, uh, electric energy. And maybe along those same lines too, as we move more towards solar power, um, because. We still get access to the grid from an investor-owned utility and, uh. People are seeing really high costs and they're true up at the end of the year too. Um, how did, how does that factor in as people consider energy, other energy sources to power their homes as well?
Thank you, Commissioner Lockhart. See, I'm not seeing any other hands up on this one, Seamus.
All right, I'll move on to the next slide.
Oh, sorry. I did have something on the second, on the second question on you had on there. Um, for other equity, I thought you were on the first question, but, um, for other equity solutions. I was just thinking of, you know, when you buy things in bulk, if the city could do a bulk purchase of. Electric appliances that, then they can then have. That subsidized in a way. I don't, I don't know if that's even feasible or practical, but just. Thinking of way to reduce the cost aside from just a straight subsidy, um. If they're, or I don't know, pooling together residents to buy in bulk somehow. And try to bring the cost down of the, these goods for electrification. Uh, Vice Chair Berliner.
Thanks, Chair Sablon. Um, I sort of wanted to, um. Kind of address some of Commissioner Lockhart's concerns a little bit, and then even yours, Chair Sablon. Um, I think that. Yes, the state streets didn't have power for a few days and I, and I get that, that is not super great. I think that having solar and having programs through the city that help, um. Low to moderate income households or families install solar on their homes and even work with landlords. Cause I know a lot of low to moderate income. Families and individuals are, are renters, work with the city to install solar and then also have a battery backup. Which could then in turn help when we do have public safety power shut offs or have. Power loss, um, and have that kind of, uh. Not vehicle to grid, because I, I work with that. It's, um, you know. Home, I guess home to grid is probably what you'd refer to it as. And I understand that it's a huge infrastructure cost and. But that's just, you know, one thing. And then I, I also do agree with Chair Sablon's, you know, idea of having bulk purchasing and. Just having, um, more programs for, um. For those in, for, for those that are impacted, um, that need, that, that basically need help. Um, or need that kind of assistance. And it could also be based on location if. You live in, if you live in a census tract, that's, and I know this is like. Getting a little too detailed, but live in a census tract or block that's considered disadvantaged, like as part of, um. Calum Virus Green Three or soon to becoming four point O, um. And just helping out that way. And I understand that this is all funds limit, like I, I understand it all costs money and I get that. You know, we're a small city and we don't necessarily have access to all those funds, but. It's just ideas. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair Berliner. Uh, Commissioner Lockhart, I see your hand still up. Is that, was that again, or? No, okay.
No, I, I just lowered it. Thank, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Laffey, I think now we can move.
All right, we'll move on to the next slide. So, um. How, what are some implementation tactics to implement, uh, this action to electrify, um, existing buildings? Um, so we can prioritize education and voluntary action prior to establishing a mandate. Um, another tactic is establishing a comprehensive electrification, energy efficiency program. To reduce the energy burden of low income residents. Uh, advocate for Cal Green to require electric space and water heating and equipment replacements by form, forming a diverse correlation to lead. Advocacy efforts. And lastly, explore opportunities to track and. Find HVAC contractors who failed to pull permits with collected fines used. To establish an electrification incentives fund. Um, so those are some tactics identified. And then, um, next slide. So some questions on that. What are the barriers to adopting a building electrification code requirement? Should any of these implementation tactics be removed or modified? Um, what are other tactics a city could take to ensure that this action is successful? And what else should we consider when planning to implement this action? So this is, um, an example action, um, the, the, the draft GHD reduction strategies. We've got, uh, dozens of these that are each going to have, um, these, you know, these, these, uh, actions, implementation. Tactics and equity issues and solutions. So, um. That'll probably be available to the public, um, on the city's website within the next few months. And we'll definitely want to have public comment on that. Um, but want to open it up to the commission. Um, if you have any questions or comments on this specific, um, action, um.
And just a reminder for the commission, this won't be your only crack at this. So if it's something you want to ponder. Uh, going forward, that's more than fine too. I know we've provided a lot to you tonight. Um, but this stuff is important and, uh, we are winding down here. We've done a lot tonight, but. We've got, you've given us really good feedback tonight, so we're grateful for that. And so, um. We'd love to hear more tonight if you have it, but also, you know, offline is, uh, works just well too. Um, we're, no bad ideas right now and we don't have all the answers yet. Uh, but we're working toward getting them and your feedback is very helpful in that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. I'm not seeing any hands up right now. Oh, let's see, Commissioners here.
Sorry about that. I think I hit the wrong button. So, um, this is a lot of information and I certainly am not an expert in this and it, it's given me a lot to, to think about. And I think it's, it's extremely important to, to make sure that we remain equitable, especially. Um, you know, for our long-term residents or residents in general that, that, uh, you know, don't have. Uh, the means to electrify, uh, let, that's a difficult one for me to say, but, uh, uh, do the electrification of their, of their. Their own residents. Uh, but I do, I do have one question, I think, um, that would help me kind of selfishly. And when I look at West Sack right as a whole and, you know, maybe like South Port, um, business complex specifically. Um, when I look at an area view of all of these massive structures, right, um, owned by these businesses. Um, there's little to no solar on, on the top of these buildings. And so I think for me, I would like to. When I think of the electric, electrification, um, these are the, these are the first kind of structures that I think about. Um, far more than maybe even the residents. Um, and I would like, I, I think it would help me to, in closing. Um, I think it would help me to see in terms of like pollution, what's the split, right? Like, uh, to have the residents, the typical. Um, single family home compared to the amount of pollution that is, uh, exerted from, um, these businesses that we have. Since we're so heavy industrial here in West Sack, um, I, I just, I just think. Again, selfishly, that would help me kind of wrap my head around, um, formulating ideas, um, on, on, on coming up with a solution to this problem.
You raise a good point, Commissioner Steger, and that's going to be one of the questions that I also am curious to ask the chamber. Uh, who represents many of those larger businesses out there that seemingly have these giant buildings with giant roofs. You know, big, bigger than a football field where you'd think they could put a ton of solar up there, um. For some reason, and the businesses in Southport have not been doing that as much as some of our other businesses. Um, like Tony's Fine Foods out by the CHP Academy has a massive array. Uh, most of our large retail businesses like Walmart, IKEA, Home Depot, they all have a lot of solar on the roof. Um, so we do need to figure out why that's not happening in some of those other businesses. Cause it certainly would seem empirically, there's a lot of opportunities. And, um. And our business community probably stands the most to gain by getting as much solar as they can. Because the commercial, um, electricity rates, um, are pretty darn high, especially compared to, you know, neighboring jurisdictions. So we're going to get some more intel on that because I don't know why they're not doing it. It would seem like. Um, it will be a no brainer. Um, yeah, even, even at your home, um, you know, these days I, I see it as, it was an investment, you know, in your home. You know, you can invest in your home with solar or you can continue to keep paying that investor-owned utility. But it's, it's really a, um. You know, unfortunately, we are seeing tremendous solar adoption in residential. Uh, but we do need to be mindful of all those persons who are living in rental housing and otherwise where, um. You know, the, even if the landlords were to do it, they're doing it to help themselves. They're not necessarily going to pass on any savings, you know, to their tenants. So, uh, we are working on it from that angle too. Unfortunately, there's people that create alternatives that does help lower income individuals. Um, you know, do solar on their roof. And I think the very good point also about some of the. Resiliency side of thing, that's a term we haven't used very often tonight, is about getting also to energy storage. You know, so that, um, you know, when the power does go out, um, potentially or not. That folks do have that storage available, um, to keep them through. And try to be as resilient as possible, because that's really the underlying theme here is that. Uh, reducing emissions in and of itself is not enough. Uh, we need to be resilient to the effects of climate change that are already happening and are likely to occur going forward. So that's another theme that's. Interwoven through this, especially when it comes to equity, because. Resiliency, um, will not be as easy for some as it is for others. And that's a, that's a imperative, I think, through this effort, um, to make sure that everyone can have that. The resiliency that, um, they're really going to need.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. And, and, um, thank you, you know, to the city staff that put this together. This has been really informative and, um. Chair Sablon, I, I don't have any, uh, further comments or questions at this time, I think.
Thank you, Commissioner Steger. See, Mr. Laffey, is this, was there another slide on this?
Yeah, we have one more slide. It's really just kind of a closing slide of the city's GHG emissions. So, um. Just wanted to, you know, open it up for any kind of last, last comments or questions, but, um. As you can see here, a lot of our emissions come from on-road vehicles and from, from energy used for. For heating and cooling, uh, buildings in the city. So. As I mentioned earlier, this is where, this is definitely still malleable. Um, this is our first pass at it. So we'll have all of this on the city website. Here in the next few months, um, with all the GHD reduction strategies. Um, now be available for public comment and that's on the climate action plan page of the, the city's website.
Thank you, Mr. Laffey. Uh, Commissioner Hirsch.
Thanks, Chair Sablon. And it's just a quick question, but looking at the chart and we didn't really touch on it much today. I see things like waterborne and I assume that's, is that the port? Or I know we have the railroad in town too. Is that part of transportation emissions or? Do the railroad and the port, are they a heavy contributor? Yes, so waterborne is, is the port. Um, we also have a few other businesses that do use the water. Um, and that along the deep water channel. And then, um, with the railroad in town, is that part of that sixty-four percent just transportation? Uh, you had mentioned in the other chart. Um, so this one's pretty tricky. Um, this is one of the first questions that we had for our consultant prepared this is how, how do we capture? Um, traffic that goes through the city, whether it's rail like Amtrak or, you know, interstate traffic. Um, and it's really, you know, local, local, um, rail. So if the rail is serving businesses. Um, industrial businesses here in the city, that would be captured. But if it's like rail traffic like Amtrak that originates in downtown Sacramento. Just passing through, that is not included in this inventory. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Any, any other questions or comments from the commissioners? I'm not seeing any, any hands up. Um. Thank you, Mr. Tilly and Mr. Laffey for the thorough presentation. This is definitely an important. Issue for not just the city, but, you know, globally, I think. This is a, a good step in the, in the right direction and looking forward to seeing where this goes and providing more feedback.
And thank you all very much tonight for indulging us. I know this was a long one, but this is, as you stated, this is an important one. And uh we want to sort of set the foundation for you. Going forward as this, you know, as this starts to, you know, start to take shape more. And we get more input from, not only from other commissions, but also another, hopefully another round of some pub- more public engagement. Um, in particularly trying to reach some of those hard-to-reach. Um, communities that we have in our town that are. Uh, perhaps some of the most vulnerable residents, you know, that we have too. So um, thank you again for very good feedback tonight, um, from everyone on this, on this front. And by all means, please, if some other ideas pop into your head, once we're done, by all means, please send us, uh, send that our way.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. With that, we'll move on to the next item, uh, administration function part two. The informal discussion. Nothing, any hands up? So, okay, so we'll adjourn and we are back on November eighteenth. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Recording stopped.